Is this recording? Good evening, I'd like to call this special meeting of the district electors to order. Today is Monday, November 13th at 6:00 PM. The first order of business is opening the floor for nominations. And Mr. Whitaker, I think is going to put that on the screen. So we'll need a motion and a second for nominees. And then a motion and a second to close the nominees. And a vote for nominees in order nominated. The first nominee and majority vote is elected. So in that, I would like to nominate John Hugh. He was elected last meeting and was unable to take that nominee because he had to leave early. He's very well versed in Robert's rules. So I would like to make a motion to nominate John Hugh. Jeff Redmond, second. Any other nominations for chairperson? Can I have a motion to close? Annette? Okay. All right, so all in favor of John Hugh? All in favor for John Hugh to be chairperson of this special meeting? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, John, you can join us at the stage.
Put that on the side, Mitchell, as well. Yeah, that's why I asked him. Mitchell, can you put, project this on the side as well, so John can read?
Got it. Okay, so we are on item 3A, consideration to authorize school board to acquire a parcel of property, approximately 1.0 acres located at 207 Packer Drive in Roberts, Wisconsin, designate the said parcel as a school building site. So at this time, I would entertain a motion and a second for this consideration, and then that can lead us into discussion. And for the benefit of the minutes, would you please state your name? Thank you, Renee. And is there a second? Thank you, Amy. Okay, so Tim, do you have some information that you can share? Thank you.
I'll get started. My name is Tim Whitaker, the superintendent here at St. Croix Central and a resident of Pleasant Valley Township. I'd just like to, this time, take the time to go through the frequently asked questions document that's been published, but I don't want to assume that everyone's read it. And I'd like to use this as a discussion and primarily informational and elaborate on it a little more. I'm prepared to talk about some of the questions. Our business manager, Jen Clashold, is also prepared to talk about some of the details, and so is Makayla Murtha, our HR director. And you'll have to excuse me, I've been fighting a cold. I lost my voice Saturday. Luckily, I got it back. And I'm a little hoarse, but I should be able to get through this with the aid of this microphone. So again, some folks have asked what happened to the nine and a half acre parcel that was up for consideration at the last meeting on October 18th. Again, the board met the Monday after that, and after much discussion, decided to take no action related to that purchase, mostly because they wanted to prioritize daycare and thought that could be detracting from the community's support. However, just procedurally, I want to remind everyone that that was tabled, that motion. And, and, and talking with our, our district council that specializes in these types of things, he said procedurally, Robert's rules of order, it could just stay on the table and die on the table if we don't remove it from the table. So if we wanted to consider that again, someone here would have to remove that from the table in order to consider it. Just know that even if we do, and the district electors would approve that, the board is not interested in pursuing that. So that would kind of be a futile attempt, I guess, or, so, just know though, I wanted to explain the procedural part of that, and then the why. At this time, the board feels they don't want to pursue that parcel. They even pursued or considered another parcel that the owners were, approached us on, considered that as well, listened to that, and then decided not to pursue that as well. So their main focus, again, is on 207 Packer Drive and, and the interest of running a daycare. So that brings us to why. Why is the district interested in getting into the daycare business? I think we didn't talk about this last meeting, but just want to remind everyone that we're not getting into the daycare business. St. Croix Central School District has been running a daycare for six years, and started with kids care, and six years of before and after school care, not during the day, but before and after school, 6:30 AM, and then all the way to 6:00 PM. Also summers, which were full days, and snow days, which of course were full days. And then this past year, the district expanded to 4K wraparound care at Trinity as well. Trinity used to be the site that our 4K classes were in with the addition of the new 4K addition at Elementary, then it converted it to daycare. And again, when we say wraparound, again, 4K classes are half-days, and the other half, they're in some sort of daycare, and we offered that. Some folks have asked, well, why did the board decide to bring back 207 Packer Drive for reconsideration? Decided to bring it back, mostly because there was a lot of feedback at the last meeting about not enough time and wanted more details. So this, almost a month, allowed us to get more details, which we'll be presenting here shortly. And also, the vote was denied by the narrowest of margins. Really, one person had voted yes instead of no, it would have been 19 to 19. So that's as narrow as it gets, plus with the setup of that boardroom, for those of you that were there, there were people in the hallway by the bathrooms that I guess we found out later didn't get the vote, show their hands. So that's the reason that the board decided to bring this back today. And then just procedurally reminded that by state statute, no more than two special meetings may be held between annual meetings to consider or act upon the same subject. So this would be the last time to be considered, tonight, until at least July, which is our annual meeting. Then lastly, board sees it as a priority. As I mentioned before, daycare is a priority for our staff and community. Terms of impact to the taxpayers, I think in that first FAQ said something about districts not looking to make a profit, and some folks confuse that with nonprofit, 501(c)(3), status, et cetera. Just, I want to remind folks that the district has always been a nonprofit. Our entire budget is not for profit, and every year, we have to pass a balanced budget, and we have revenue limits, which have been imposed for going on 30 years now. What, again, nonprofit, it's not a 501(c)(3) per se, but just know that there'll be zero impact on the taxpayers for those operational costs. Only thing we're asking our taxpayers to incur would be for the purchase price of this property, which would not exceed $500,000. And again, we'll explain in more detail how we're able to balance expenditures and revenues. Again, the district is no stranger to that. We do that every year with our entire $25 million budget, and then there's budgets within budgets, as you can imagine. And again, as a reminder, we're able to best control that through our staffing. Staffing in any organization, 80% of the budget goes to salary and compensation, and same holds true for us. And again, just like we do in our classrooms, for instance, the more students we have, the more teachers or staff we have to hire, and vice versa. We have fewer students in daycare, we'd have to hire fewer staff. We have more, we add more. So it's proportional directly. Speaking of costs and benchmarking, at the last October 18th meeting, folks had asked about other daycares and wanted more benchmarking, marketing data. So with that, I'd like to introduce our HR director, Makayla Murtha, who did that work in benchmarking our local daycare and their costs and numbers. Makayla?
I'm Makayla Murtha, Human Resources Director at St. Croix Central. So the first data that I collected was existing daycares in our community. So a lot of this, as for the licensed daycares, came directly from St. Croix County. And on the chart there, I have it kind of separated out by Hammond and Roberts, and then the second column is whether they're licensed or not. So if it says yes next to licensed, that is coming directly from St. Croix County. And then all of the non-licensed daycares, I reached out to personally and spoke with them to gather this data. And the kids on the waitlist, I think Tim has that, and it's 53 kids, is what we know about. And that's just the non-licensed in-home daycares that we know of, that currently have 53 kids on their waitlist. So the proposed daycare, we would operate based off of a similar licensure to all of the licensed daycares in St. Croix County. So our license would be good from six weeks to 12 years. The capacity of the building is, I believe it's 100. However, our license would be looking from 60 to 80. The waitlist, obviously, TBD. And then the rates per week, we wanted to match other daycares in our area. So it would be $175 a week for ages two-plus, and then for newborns, it would be 225. And the way that we came up with that 225 is because, based on licensure, you can only have four children per one staff member, so obviously, the costs are more. If we move down to our licensure itself, it'll go through the ratios of staff per children, and then what our licensure would be if we maxed out. So if we maxed out, we could not have more than 118 kids in the daycare, but our prime ticket is 59 kids. And that would include over the summer as well, which we are already doing. I did send out a survey to St. Croix Central staff. Here, let me scroll down here, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So I sent out a survey to St. Croix Central staff and asked them if they would send their children to this proposed daycare, or maybe, or no. And this does not include the staff that are already sending their children to kids care, either before or after school, or during the summer. So the amount of staff that said yes was 14, and the amount of staff that said maybe was 17. And I think that's it, Tim? Okay. All right, so next is Jen Clashold, she's our business manager, and she'll be going over the revenue and expenditure estimates.
So we put together some numbers. First, I'll go through the, the weekly staff costing estimate. So we took our compensation rate per hour and added in all of the different benefits that the employees would receive. They are 12-month employees, so they do receive a fully paid family health insurance policy, contribution to HSA, and of course, the other things you can see listed there. So the cost is about $1,320 per week per staff member. So that plays into... All right. I'm horrible with this mouse. Okay, so we estimated our revenues, again, those zero to two-year-old kids, it would be four per classroom, that's the maximum allowed, at that weekly rate of $225. We assumed that we would have one classroom of age zero to two. And then it breaks it down between the two and two-and-a-half-year-olds, two-and-a-half to three, three-years, four-years, and five and over. You can see that they're all different numbers based on how many the licensing you can have, how many students in a classroom. So the four-year-olds and the five-year-olds assume two sections, but keep in mind, so we're talking about 90 students on this scenario, keep in mind that those five-year-olds are actually before and after school are at the elementary school. So they won't physically be at the Daisy Hill property. So you can see those revenues, and then, of course, we assumed full daycare during the school breaks, and those times where the students are not in school. The expenditures, we estimated as nine FTE. Now, we do have several part-time staff members and, and such that help fill in for us, but you can see the estimated cost there for the staffing, as well as subs for if they are out, or we just need additional help at different times if we have a few more kids. Our estimated yearly maintenance and operating expenditures, and then all those miscellaneous things, you know, just including supplies and snacks, and whatever else is needed for Okay, so the next question that we had is, are we going to accept any government funding? So we currently do apply for a grant through the State of Wisconsin that is a COVID relief program that is hosted through the federal government. So currently, we are, you know, applying for those funds and receiving those funds, and we would continue that as long as that program is in place. So as far as staffing, we have our current kids care director that would oversee the program. Right now, we have five full-time teachers and one part-time teacher that would continue in their role, and we also have six intermittent high schoolers and college students that help us out. A lot of that is in the summertime. I think we talk about food service a little bit later, but we do have it mentioned here as well, that we're considering using the elementary kitchen to provide meals for the kids. And then lastly, would be housekeeping, and then potentially, if we need it, an administrative assistant or health aide in that building. You can see here our annual estimated maintenance and operating costs. So we did contact Excel Energy and St. Croix Gas, as well as The Village, to obtain those numbers. So we feel like they are very close estimates. We used our costs that we have in-house for housekeeping, as well as lawn care and snowplowing. So you can see those costs there. And then I think, Tim, you're going to take over for transportation? So the mill rate, and we have talked about this last time we met as well. So as a district, we have been prepaying debt. So instead of levying exactly what we need to make, you know, for our revenue limit for our students and for our debt payments, we've been increasing that to prepay an amount of debt. So when we say there's no impact to the mill rate, we're saying that the levy amount that we're going to levy each year is going to be the same whether we purchase this property using Fund $80, or if we put that money into prepaying more debt. So the mill rate overall, or that total levy amount, would be the same regardless of this, if this is approved or not. And then I think the other thing we wanted to cover was... Yeah, I do have it here. So I went on, and of course, as we said last time, the current rate is 6.25%. And of course, we would have different options as to how long we want that funding to last. So I threw together three different scenarios, the longest being a 15-year repayment, and the shortest being a five-year repayment. So of course, the longer the repayment schedule, the lower your payment, but also, the more you're going to pay in interest, especially at the 6.25%. So on 15 years, if we were able to purchase the property for $400,000, our payment would be just shy of $42,000 each year. Out of that, over the course of the loan, we would pay about $228,000 worth of interest costs. If we go to a 10-year repayment, the same $400,000, the repayment, or the payment each year would be about $55,000, and the interest costs would decrease to $150,000. If we went with a five-year repayment schedule, then we're looking at approximately $96,000 payment each year, and interest costs would be reduced to right around $78,000. So you can see with that higher interest rate, that that shorter term makes quite a bit of difference in the amount of interest that's being paid.
One of the questions was, can referendum dollars be used for property purchase? The answer to that is no. State statutes only provide explicitly in our referendum resolution. Also, I think somebody asked about why this special meeting and not a referendum. Again, state statutes allow for property purchases such as this, to have special meeting of the district electors. We talked about already, who can vote in person, need to be a district president? Yes, oh yeah, transportation. Thank you, John. So transportation, we currently bus 4K students to and from school and daycares in the district already. We would just continue to do that. We can only transport students that we provide academic support, education to, which is started earliest as 4K. And I, and also, early childhood, as early as three. So that would just continue, nothing different, as a matter of fact, because of the location. I want to point out, it's so close to the elementary school, that most likely would reduce transportation rather than going out to different sites in our, in our district for kids that go to 207 Packer Drive. And again, food service could be provided through our elementary food service program already. You know, we have the kitchen there. I just have to put it in some special, you know, warming type transportation equipment and, and, and some sort of pickup truck slash van slash whatever to get it to site each day. As a matter of, I've got experience doing that, that's exactly what happened. At the last school district I worked at, was only a high school kitchen, and they actually transported the food service warm meals every day over to the elementary about a half a mile away. In terms of furnishings, we plan to use existing furniture, got quite a bit of furniture in our existing 4K space in Trinity, play equipment, learning materials, et cetera. Because we'd have more classrooms, though, we would need to purchase some more. Plus, we just have a little bit of storage of extra desks and chairs and tables, et cetera, but we still would have to purchase more. And we currently have a fund balance in Fund 80 of $54,000 that could potentially be used to purchase those items as well. All right, we talked about tonight's procedure. I think back, then it brings us to the FAQ from the last meeting, of which, just highlight quickly, this, this 207 Packer Drive facility was built exactly for a daycare. It's what it's made for, so it's a turnkey daycare facility, has sat vacant for two years. Again, there was a little, there was a frozen pipe that burst, so there'd be some drywall repair. It's been inspected, walked through it three times. The asbestos came back clean, the radon did come back, the levels, so we'd have to address the radon, which is not uncommon for many facilities, and still waiting on the mold See, again, this resolution would be not to exceed $500,000 total, which, again, the district is planning on a $400,000 purchase price and leave $100,000 for renovations. Talked about the profit, talked about the impact on other daycare businesses a little bit. I think that's about it for the information. I think, are we ready to open it up? Few questions from the district electors? Chair, do you have something to add?
So at this time, opening it up for commenting questions to the electorate, a district elector, someone who's at least 18 years old, lives within the district boundaries. And I think the best way to do that, and I asked Tim to, I had talked to Tim earlier about how we're going to use the auditorium, and I suggested the microphone, so I'm glad they're here. I would ask that you come up to the microphone, you just state your name, like you or Tim say, I was Pleasant Valley Township, or I would say I'm Hammond Township, we don't need your address, just your name, that's your district resident, and then your question or your comment. So at this time, if you have questions or comments, we can, and I, it's probably easy if we don't get a great, big, long queue, but just face yourself, and anyone that has questions or comments, please feel free to come to the microphone.
Andy Kritz, Village
Andy Kritz, Village of Hammond. My question has to do with the, the revenues that would be generated from this. You had put on how much, you know, per kid, et cetera and so forth. It sounds like you're expecting a lot of the revenue to come from teachers sending their kids there. But in situations where spring break, winter break, summer, the teachers aren't working, would you still be charging the teachers the cost of their kids going there? And if you're not, then that would take away from that revenue that you're expecting.
Thanks for the question, Andy. So this would be a community-wide daycare. The survey results that we had from SEC staff, they were just general and definitely would not be filling up the daycare. And we would yes, absolutely charge staff the same rate as the community members. If their student or if their children are going to the daycare or not, they're still charged.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, Andy, on that survey, 14 staff said they would, 17 maybe. You know, that would be 31 if all the maybe sent them and to be full, we'd be 59. That would be our ideal number.
Others with questions or comments?
My name's Kevin Burton. All your repayments were based on $400,000. Why not 500,000? If we're borrowing 500,000, our payment should be based on 500,000. Thank you.
Our estimated purchase price that we would like to get the purchase for is 400,000. We plan to use our existing fund balance for any renovations to the property, which we anticipate would be around that $50,000 mark from what I've heard. So that would be dollars that have already been assessed into the daycare fund, I guess you would say, from parents, you know, fees that have been charged and their costs have been less, a little bit less than what they've charged, so they've built up a fund balance. We can use those dollars to help out with this renovation costs.
Jen, are you saying that is there, is there a current balance existing within the district offers or whatever within this fund that you would be not needing to borrow the full 400 or the full 500?
Correct. It came from the parents that are bringing their kids to the childcare, paying their fees. We've been running since 2016. During that time, they have built up a balance. So those would be the dollars that we would use for those renovation costs.
Number is 400,000. $54,000. Oh, we'd like the $54,000 to your point to help with renovation furniture and equipment.
If I'm, if I'm hearing your comment correctly, you're saying that in the original, and Mitchell, can you bring the original motion? It says up to 500 or not to exceed 500? In the amount of? There is no amount on there. This school, what I'm understanding from Jen and you speak, if I'm not, I'm trying to restate what I'm hearing because he's not on the microphone right now. And I might have you come back up if we'd like to continue the discussion. What I'm hearing is the district wants to borrow $400,000 for the purchase of the property.
Correct.
That's where the three scenarios at six and a quarter for 15, 10-year or five-year payback came from.
Correct.
There's an additional monies available in a fund that has accumulated over time from the daycare that's already been provided by district and that's 54,000. Those dollars would be used for any renovation or additional equipment purchase.
Correct.
So there is not an amount here, but when we... This is a consideration, Tom. This is only a consideration. We're not, we don't have a motion at this time. Or consideration. We are, we are only a consideration, Tom.
Correct. The 500,000 was in the FAQ. That's what the district has kind of as an internal number. Yes, we would, we would want in the motion, the amount. Yeah, right? You don't just, yeah, that makes sense. You wouldn't just say, hey, purchase this property at unlimited amount. So that would be in the motion and we would recommend that be 400,000. And then that would actually even help in our purchase, in our negotiation to say, hey, this is what our district electors approved. You know, we're capped at that. So 400,000 is number that our internal discussions have arrived at for the purchase price that we would like to write into the purchase agreement. So I, yeah, I want to clarify, I understand where you get the 500,000 from, which was an FAQ number one, which would have included, you know, our renovations with our fund balance and/or furniture.
So Tom, I'm hearing your point and what we do. I think when we get to the point of the motion, Tom, or whether we are going to, as an electorate, pass this or not pass this, we will have in that motion, you can use most of these words. I think you, we will need to add what that dollar amount is. And then we will, and Tim just told me, he will type in what the actual motion is so everyone can see it and read it and it will be clear, both verbally spoken and then visible. We're good? Okay. Other comments or questions, please?
My name is Amy Toski. As we're talking about funds, you had mentioned the COVID relief funds or, I don't remember what you call it, but in the event that ends, what does that do? And a real quick secondary question, would teachers get priority for care? No?
Because we're running this through Fund 80, everybody, it's a first come, first served basis. So I know we had discussed that the last time as well. As far as the COVID relief funding, correct, if that were to end, then we might have to make some changes. We have been using a lot of the funds for like snacks and supplies for the program, which typically do run, thinking it was right around 15,000 last year. So you could see by the numbers that we had up earlier that we were estimating just for miscellaneous items, including those snacks and supplies around 44,000. So that does give us a little bit of wiggle room when that COVID relief funding ends, that we do have that built into our numbers.
I just want to make sure I repeat. So Mad, Mad just have your name, please, and then I'll restate what your comment was. Okay, so for the benefit of everyone, the governor has continued the approval of that through December of 2025, from your information source. Thank you. And Tim was, Tim just, is this, okay, Tim just confirmed that was the same program we were talking about, please?
Good evening. My name is Shane Maderas. I live in Roberts. I just have a couple of quick comments here, observations, as it were. I can't help but feel that you guys haven't been completely transparent on some of the tax impact this may have. I mean, here it says, would this impact other local daycares and businesses? Well, I happen to know there's a couple in town who are very much nervous about something like this going forward. You know, I'm not against having any kind of daycare, daycare facilities or anything, but the issue comes, I mean, I think anybody, anybody would really want to that had money that just kind of came to them with the leverage of taxpayers' dollars could probably start a daycare and run it. And I think that's usually one of the big things that causes a issue, a starting one, as well as staffing. That's kind of what's the recent issue. But here it goes on. Yes, potentially this would, could possibly impact daycare, daycares. However, not at home daycares. But it goes on and says, a competitive salary with benefits, including health, dental, vision insurance and Wisconsin retirement, which would all be taxpayer burden. Could be attractive option for current daycare owners and employees. I feel like that needs to be pointed out. That is definitely going to be a tax hit for us taxpayers and I feel like we've already passed a couple of levies that have gone through not real recent, or I guess recently, rather. Also, this goes on saying that there's a possibility of you would have to hire somebody for food service, potentially. Says we don't intend to hire any additional staff until we know our registration numbers, but you're considering an administrative assistant. I mean, that would be another person on the payroll. I guess some of those tax concerns I have above and beyond the 500,000. And at the same time, I don't, like I said, I don't understand why the school needs to be involved with, you know, the government doesn't need to be involved with trying to run privatized businesses. And also you, you kind of point out here that you're going to have high school students potentially helping out. I don't, in my understanding, that's not even legal. They're not, to be licensed, you, that high school individual can't watch other children and, and carry that, that burden of that extra students, you know, involved. I don't know if somebody could, maybe, maybe one of you could explain that one a little bit?
Well, thank you for your comments. So as for the high school students, we have a childcare program that we have through our high school. I believe Courtney Hawkins teaches it, Pete Hednon? Okay. So Courtney Hawkins teaches that and it is for students 16 and older to have this, I don't want to call it a license, but it's like a certificate. So it's run directly through the state of Wisconsin for our students ages 16 and older to have a childcare certification by the state of Wisconsin. And those are the children or students, I guess, that we are hiring as assistant teachers. So they are underneath a lead teacher. We also have helpers too, which is kind of confusing, but they're called teaching assistants. So they also help too. And those are for those students that are currently in the childcare certification program, but have not completed it yet. So all of our high school students that are in or have completed a childcare certification class are all through the state of Wisconsin and they are underneath a lead teacher who is licensed by the state of Wisconsin. Does that answer your question? Under supervision of a lead teacher who is over 18 and licensed by the state of Wisconsin. They are not to be on their own with this specific group of children. They are either assistant teachers or teaching assistants. Yes, they are paid. Correct. Yes, correct. Sorry. For those that didn't hear, she said they have to be approved by the licenser in the state of Wisconsin. So we would have essentially a license, a licensure that would come out and would have to approve everybody that we have working in the daycare.
We currently do.
And we do currently do that. We have our wraparound kids care program and our summer program. And we currently have high school and college students that are either enrolled in a childcare certification program or have completed it. They are already working under our licensure.
Yeah, so again, I, I thought Jen explained it clearly, the tax impact and the benefits and all that. And then you said you feel like we haven't been transparent. We've, I think we've been transparent so much that you're using our words that we're, you know, we're even doing our best guesses, right? Facts and best guesses and possibilities and scenarios. Terms of a governmental entity providing privatized care, that's, I don't under, I don't follow that logic. It's governmental, providing a governmental service. Then in terms of need and the impact on other daycares, again, just through the benchmarking data, there were 53 students or 53 children on the waitlist alone. I mean, there's the need. We're not, we're not looking to get into this because we, I don't know, want to do something new. We've been doing it. We want to expand it for current, we do it currently, want to expand it because there's a perfect facility available and because there's a need. And it's not just for our staff, like you said, it's staff community and we can't prioritize staff over community members. But in fact, yes, we recognize that it is indeed a tool that we can use to attract and retain staff. It's, it's a, it's a benefit. It's a win-win. And matter of fact, talked to a person on the Western Wisconsin Health Board and Western Wisconsin Health is looking to do this exact same thing to start a daycare because of the need and for their employees that miss days of work in order to stay home with their kids. It's a win-win for them if they can get daycare and then they get their staff, who is the person they hired. Even like for us, I always say the best sub in the world, the level of service and the level of education they provide is, is going to drop because the person that we hired to do that job is not there for the day. So we want to try to do everything we can to keep our amazing staff in front of kids. And if, and if that's taking this daycare hurdle off the table, that's exactly what our board and administration has decided to do. It's, it's, it's not even that visionary. I like to say visionary. It's, you know, visionary. It's just expanding what we currently do because again, we want to achieve our mission and vision of being a district respected by others and to prepare our students to exceptional character and knowledge. All these, all these little things tie into making our schools so wonderful. I mean, it's not any one thing. This is another thing that we think can help us achieve our vision, mission. And our schools are the hub of our community and we're very proud of that. And we're just looking for a unique opportunity here. We're happy to answer any more questions you have and be transparent. I mean, that's what we're here for.
I could just rebut that just a little bit. I mean, I've, I've worked for many companies. I know a lot of other people work for many companies. Nobody's ever offered me childcare and the company's never gone out of their way to purchase a facility to run childcare. I mean, I understand, I understand the mission of retaining staff, but at the same time, it's, it's governmental. I mean, private industry is not typically doing that. But you know, it's still, again, it's, in order to do this, you need taxpayers' ability to push this. And I think there's plenty of people, maybe not right here in this room, but I know there are people, given the opportunity, they would purchase that and run it. given the opportunity, they would purchase that and run it. They just don't have the upfront capital to start it.
We don't have the upfront capital either. That's why we're asking to borrow $400,000.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah. And, yeah, why not, again? Why are you supposed, I don't know if I understood you completely, but your whys of why you're
Why, I mean, I'm not opposed to having this daycare. I'm just opposed as to the process of it. I feel like it should be a privatized situation. Obviously, the, the school, the St. Cory Central is, you know, is leveraging, looking for approval from the taxpayers of this community to go forward with it. I'm sure there's plenty of people, like I said, maybe not exactly in this room, possibly in this room. I know there are people who would run a daycare and move it forward too, if somebody just hand them the capital.
That's what banks are for. Most people take out a business loan or a mortgage to purchase property. I mean, $400,000, I think, is pretty doable for most people.
But then they have to pay for it. Whereas here, we're paying for it.
Correct.
That's the big difference.
And then just to be clear, that's what we're asking you, not to run it. And you talked about benefits, WRS, all those are paid, as Jen showed, through the fees paid by the families, you know, moving forward.
So they're paying, they're paying for the Wisconsin, the families are paying for the Wisconsin pensions, and they're, they're paying for the, the maintenance personnel that come from the other schools that come over and replace faucets and faucet cartridges and things of that nature. So there's, there's no extra cost there then.
Correct.
So there's no, this facility will have no extra cost then.
Correct. It's exactly what we showed in that balanced budget. It's what we do every day with different scales.
Right? It doesn't make sense to me, I guess. I'm thinking a facility is going to have extra costs to it.
No, that's exactly what the $27,000 that we showed is for operational. In addition to salaries and benefits, and that, that balanced budget was entirely from the revenues from the fees that the families pay.
Well, as long as it sounds good to you, I'm not buying it.
That's not helpful. I'm presenting facts.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm going to take the next comment, if I may. Are you waiting to make a comment as well?
Yeah, my name is Cameron Armbrust. I live about two miles from the Daisy Hill property. I have a, I'm just making a comment, by the way. I have a three-year-old approximately and a one-year-old approximately kid. We've been to three different daycares in three years. The first one was Daisy Hill. It was very convenient. And we went to one in Hudson, and now we're down in River Falls. And I would just like to comment that this would save our family about hard savings, $7,300 per year. We consider the soft savings, it's much more than that. We've had to take time off of work. We've had to do all sorts of things and drive a lot further to get our kids to daycare just so we can both work, my wife and I, that is. So I think this is an awesome idea. And the fact, actually, I will ask one question. So the, the cost of operating this daycare will be paid for entirely by the the fees generated from the parents actually getting services, taking their kids here, correct? Okay, thank you. So this is going to save me $7,000, probably double that if you consider the soft savings a year, and it's not going to cost the taxpayers any more money to run the thing. I think it's an awesome idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Patrick Gostovich, Hammond Township resident. Couple of questions. If purchased, how long before it's operational? Do you have an estimate how it would be?
Yeah, we would anticipate opening in the fall of 2024.
Fall of 2020, yeah, okay. Another question. What is, you said that the current, the mill rate would stay the same and the taxes incurred by the residents go to prepaying the debt. What's our current rate on that debt we're prepaying?
I don't recall off the top of my head what the debt portion is.
The rate, what's the rate, interest rate we're paying on that debt?
Oh, the interest rate? It varies depending on the timeline of repayment. So I think the highest is around 4% and the lowest, I think, somewhere around that 1% mark.
Okay.
Yeah, we bought at a very low rate.
My comment around that is prepaying low-interest-rate debt to incur a higher interest rate is sometimes bad business, but you can do the math on that. Has there ever been any consideration by the board in this inflationary environment when we're sitting at 7% to 8.5%, possibly 9% inflationary, inflation numbers, to slow down the prepayment of the 1% to 2% debt and let people keep a little bit more of that in their pockets each year? Any thought around that?
Yeah, great question, Pat. So just to clarify, yeah, we, we, you know, have the referendum debt. You know, we borrowed $30 million in this last one, for example, and it varies from 1% up to 4%. So to your point, yes, that's the only debt we had, so we were paying that. If we were to get this, and again, I want to speak for the board, but yeah, good business would be to prepay the higher interest rate, right? Whenever the board decides if they borrow five, 10, or 15 years, knowing the board and their history, they're going to go for the shorter term. So, you know, end up paying less in taxes, but that all depends on the interest rate, and that's what we've tried to lessen interest. Yeah, sorry. All depends on the mill rate, I'm sorry, and trying to keep that flat. But to your point, yes, we did lower, or the board lowered the mill rate last year from 10.2 to 9.2. So yeah, that certainly is something the board considers every year in that annual meeting is, is where that mill rate is. Unless taxes, tax burden, to your point.
Yep. Okay, I was just wondering if they, I mean, from a resident's perspective, if slowing down the prepayment of that 1% to 2% debt would lower people's tax bills even more so that they could have a little bit more in their pocket, so.
Yeah, the board hears you, yeah.
Another question too, and I think this is more of a comment, but back to the operating model, and I appreciate the numbers you brought back since the last meeting. Thank you. But I think the biggest risk, and a lot of people in this room will think, will agree, is it's the staffing, right? Getting qualified people to be there. You had nine FTEs up there, so you're going to get nine FTEs to staff this, to staff this childcare. And do you foresee that as a risk? I kind of do, to get nine qualified people to stay on, you know, to, to, to make sure that you're fully staffed. And if, if something happens where you can't staff that, that changes the amount of kids you can take, that could throw off your break-even analysis, and then all of a sudden, do you foresee a risk where the taxpayers are on the hook to come up with some of the differences? Let's say you have so many kids enrolled and you lose some staff, you just can't kick those kids out, right? So now you've got to supplement, you have to pay more for staff. Have you thought about those risks and what that looks like?
Yeah, so thank you, Pat. So our current, okay, kids care currently staffs more than nine FTE overall. So at, at the startup, we would not be looking to hire any additional staff. We just estimate that nine FTE is what we're going to need to operate, and we're going to use our existing staff already. So we're not going to be hiring any additional staff, if that makes sense.
It does make sense, but like this new, this new model is an all-age community daycare, so there's going to have to be people on-site full-time, correct?
Correct.
Is that what it currently is like too?
Yes.
All year?
Yes.
Okay, but, but they're not doing daycare all day currently for all age?
Right, yeah. So they're on different shifts. So because we have our 4K wraparound care, we can have staff that are working from, I would have to look back exactly and see what their shifts are like, but we have openers, closers, and then midday shifts. And we have some staff that work eight hours a day, some staff work six hours a day, some staff work four hours a day. But yes, we do have staff working all day, and our kids care staff that we employ full-time are with kids all day based on their shift.
Okay. And then, so I think I had
And then Pat, to your, the risk management, right?
Yeah.
Always, what I'm thinking about is risk management. What's the worst-case scenario?
Right, and that's the, that's what you hear from all the other facilities, right, is like they can't get staffed, it's so hard to retain staff. It's like, what makes this model any different than all those other models of being able to retain quality staff?
To Michaela's point, we have the staff. Yeah, now if, if the need grows and we decide, hey, we get a need and folks want to enroll 80 kids, right, we can control that variable. And say, sorry, until we hire another staff, we can't increase it, right? So we can keep that proportional, staff to students. You know, and we can get started with our existing staff, right? And we can always control those variables through a cap.
And something, just to add to what Tim said, something that we do kind of have in our pocket too is the university. So we have a really good partnership with the early childhood education program at River Falls. So current students that are going to school to become teachers in the early childhood program, we have a very good relationship with them, and they would be more than willing to have staff come on board. So it's not like we would be, you know, searching for staff all the time. We do have those other programs and different avenues that we can see if they'll help.
And now I remember my last question. Moving to an all-age community daycare, does this change any kind of state regulatory compliance, audit, inspection requirements versus what you have today?
Yes, it does. So we would have to expand our licensure for our current kids care. So we're currently licensed from, I believe it's three years and up through kids care, so we would have to expand that licensure. And then, yes, there would be different audits that we would have to go through. I don't know the specifics, unfortunately. But just from speaking with our kids care director, yes, we would have to expand our licensure, which would be more intense.
Any risks associated with that of things going wrong? I mean, do you foresee anything with that, or?
I mean, there's risks with everything, but we are at an advantage that we are already licensed. So it would just be expanding that licensure.
All right, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Come on.
Hi, I'm Nat Shala, District Resident. I want to make sure I understand. So we currently have $54,000 in the Fund 80, correct? And you stated the balances there from past kids care. But according to the DPI website, the district has levied $70,000 into that fund at least for the last three years.
That is correct. The district levies $70,000 into the entire Fund 80 program, which includes more than the daycare. So we also have the program that Paulette Anderson runs, as well as a GRASP program at the middle school for after-school for kids that need help. And, oh, the, I think the backpack program, but that's solely on donations. So it's mostly the GRASP program, and I think at the high school, they have a FabLab program that's also run through Fund 80. So that's where the majority of those $70,000 that are being levied each year are going for those programs, not for the daycare portion.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Gosh, sorry. I guess I would highly encourage the board to consider if we feel like there is space within our mill rate and the district's desires to look at the investment from something such as a Fund 80 into something such as a pool that all district residents could use throughout their lifetime, rather than just a daycare, which although could have great impact to the staff, there's really a very small window of time that that's a benefit to any one person. Personally, I feel this could help see growth within our community. There's also a huge effect on school funding if we continue to see the enrollment decline, such as we've seen this year, and you spoke to at the last meeting. So something like a daycare and teacher retention hugely important. It's also important to invest so that we don't see that declining enrollment and see that have the negative impacts on our funding as well.
Thanks, Annette. And to that point, we have 16 4K students open and rolling out currently. So this is one of those things to try to help with keeping that enrollment up.
Hi, I'm Carrie Koenigendorf from the town of Hammond. I'm new at this adulting stuff, so I'm just have a quick, simple question. One year back in June with the summer school, there was not enough staff for summer school, so in order for my kids to go to kids care, they had to be in summer school. So with this daycare, is that going to be an issue anymore? Like, is it going to be just open in June? For daycare, I don't know what keeps going. Are we not going to have those types of issues with daycare? And then are you also going to have it available for the two weeks in August where we don't have kids care?
Yes. So this daycare would be year-round, fully operational, separate from summer school. So the summer school staffing was because of, really, our teachers and our staff didn't sign up. So I can't speak too much of that. I don't know if Jackie's here. I don't see Jackie, but yeah, so our summer school wasn't staffed because our staff chose not to sign up. But kids care, the daycare, would be totally separate from the summer school and would run year-round. There wouldn't be that, how do I say it? Yeah, there wouldn't be any tie to summer school where I feel like now kind of is. It would be two totally separate entities. Does that answer your question?
Yep. And then my other one is just a comment. I worry about the transportation part just because we had recently just one bus driver gone, and my kids had 50 minutes added to their bus and time in school. So that was just my comment of worrying about staffing on transportation side.
Sure, thank you.
My name's Eric. I'm from Warren Township. And my question has to do with, I have two questions. One is, you mentioned Trinity location. Are we currently paying for another location right now? And would that money transfer over to paying off what we're doing?
So yes, we currently are paying an amount to Trinity each year. Of course, this is the first year that that is being run through the kids care program because prior to that, it was our 4Kers that were over there. So we would be terminating that lease with Trinity if we were to be able to purchase this piece of property.
I guess, I guess the question is, how, how much are we paying right now for that?
It's like 19, just over $19,000 a year.
And then my second, my second question has to do with, my second question has to do with, you made a comment about it being that it's going to financially take care of itself. But then we have somebody who comes up and they mention that you're, they're using the same, the same budget line for other things. Is that going to change if next year, when we look at this, or we look at this two years down the road, and as a group, we want to see that, yep, you, you've lived up to that, it is taking care of itself? Are we going to be able to just follow one budget line where we can see everything, or are we still going to have to go through this and kind of try to parse out, oh, well, that's actually somebody else who's doing an art program, and somebody else who's raising calves, or something like this? Like, are we going to be able to see it as one budget line later on in life?
Jen, before you respond, let me just say it so everyone can hear, since Eric was on a microphone. The question is, within the Fund 80, can you see all the different programs so that there's clarity around what is from the daycare versus the other programs that are also in Fund 80?
Yeah.
Yeah, so each year, as part of our annual meeting in July, we publish a community education bulletin, per se. It's part of our annual meeting packet that shows how those $70,000 that we're currently levying into Fund 80 are spent. We also do have other programs in there that are run completely by donations, and they are also listed on there. So I can certainly share that out with the community if we need to. The daycare is a portion of that Fund 80. So we have it separated out in the district's books by a different fund number. So instead of Fund 80, it's actually Fund 82. So that keeps all of the expenses and everything separate in our accounting. At the state level, when we're actually levying money for Fund 80, we are unable to do that. So it's just, are we levying for Fund 80, or are we not levying for Fund 80? But just, yeah, and within our books, it is separated.
So Jen, is that Fund 82 like a sub account to Fund 80 for the clarity in your bookkeeping?
Correct. So everything that has to do with the kids care program goes into that Fund 82. All the revenues that come in, all the expenditures that go out.
All right, my two quick comments are, uh, my wife has been in the industry for many decades now. And um, we have firsthand experience in infant and toddler licensing is not a chip shot. So it's not just like, oh yeah, we're just going to expand it. It is a different kind of animal. So I just want people to respect that is a little, it's a little more complicated than just going, let's just add another room over here. There's, there's a lot more to it than that. How so?
Also, yeah.
Yeah, you, you did mention that it is less, uh, the, the ratios are less, right? But just when it comes to different uh, safety things, different training for the, you just can't take the people who are, were doing fif- uh, five-year-olds and then do, so there's, there's more training to it and setting up. If uh, the facility is already set up for it, that's probably going to be helpful. But um, I just, just to understand that it's not just, oh yeah, check another box on the paper and pay another 50 bucks to get the license done. Uh, and the last thing is, uh, if we're going to be asking teachers to pay for a full year, even though they don't need the summer, um, I, there's a good chance they're just going to say, hey, we're going to need to find somebody else anyways because I'm not going to want to pay an extra 170 a week for a pro, for a, for a service I'm not going to use. So if we're, if we're trying to set it up for teachers, is there some kind of way of working with them to do that?
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, we never said that we would make them pay for the full year. We would, we would do the.
Yeah.
Okay, I was meaning if their kids are there or not, meaning my daycare. If my child is sick on one day, I still pay. If my childcare provider took the day off, I still pay. So we would, we haven't looked at the nitty gritty details of it, but because our numbers increase in the summer for kids care, because we have students that go to school during the school year and would need childcare during the summer, there would potentially be an option for part-time care. So the teachers or other staff wouldn't necessarily be paying during the summer. It would be the same if there was somebody in the community working at a different district or maybe they only needed part-time care. It would be the same thing. So they wouldn't necessarily be paying for all year care. What I meant by that is spring break, everybody that is enrolled in the program, depending on how we have that listed, they would pay. Does that make?
Please, 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 please. Please come to the microphone if you'd like to have discussion so that.
Yeah. Uh, wait, before I sit down. Yep.
We likely will have income because our numbers increase during the summer for those kids that are four, five, six, seven, eight, nine that need care. They would still pay the $175 a week. Correct, so.
So what's the question?
Just the, the question is, is that if I were doing this with ABC childcare down the way and I said, hey, by the way, I'm going to take a two-month vacation, hold my spot for my kid. They'd be like, thank you, we'll hold your spot, but we're still going to take your money. If we're asking teachers to do that same thing over summer vacation, uh, I just don't think that that's going to be as, as beneficial as we, as you're making it sound like it could be. Uh, and my last comment before I sit down is the 50-plus students that you say that are on a waiting list are probably double counted. If you called up multiple people, I just know that if I was wanting my kid to get in someplace, I'd probably put them on a waiting list for two, three places. So I don't know if there was some way of knowing that they're, probably not a nice way of knowing if they're double counted, but that's maybe more like 30 kids. So, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Eric. And, and to both of your points, we have not uh, discussed that level of detail regarding the summer, but I think I can safely say as an administrator, we would not um, uh, would not be advantageous. I don't think I would not be in favor of saying you're going to pay even though you have it all summer. And we would not have to hold spots like smaller daycares that only have six to eight because we have the capacity of up to 100. And to Michaela's point, in the summer, we might get more kids, uh, right? That, that offset uh, and, and make up for that revenue. So um, I think with that flexibility, uh, I would not be, again, I would not be in favor of, of charging anyone uh, for a month or longer, uh, not having daycare and not charging them to hold a spot. But again, um, you know, I think the cart is way ahead of the horse here. We're trying to, you know, purchase the property first and come up with a level of detail. Again, full transparency, we haven't talked about the summer thing.
And one thing I wanted to add to is, again, this is not a 100% St. Chris Central staff daycare. The St. Chris Central staff that indicated that they would be utilizing it is less than 25% of our capacity.
There currently is one nursery. Um, I'm not sure how, what age they stay in that nursery at this point, up till two? Okay. Again, that's the, the existing has one nursery. There's lots of space, so that has yet to be determined. Again, it would be based on need. If we find out that we have 16, 20, 24 that need a nursery, then we can, you know, turn that into a nursery. But again, we can control that, those variables. We don't have to accept 24 infants. Correct. In our model, we, we capped it at 12 in that chart. Or eight, zero to two, I'm sorry, eight.
Tom Zawald, oh, sorry, I'll step back a little. Or not, I'll just talk loud. Um, Tom Zawald, District Resident. So I wanted to first start by commending the staff here at the district. We passed a referendum back in April of 2022 and one of the biggest things that was passed was teachers' salaries. And as I quote, "We believe a competitive salary is needed to attract and retain the highest quality staff." In the 18 months since that has happened, staff turnover rate has been at 3.8% versus the 24 months prior to that was at 13%. So, you know, as we stand in this room and say we have, and I shouldn't say staff, that is not correct. This is teachers. This was teacher data, not staff data. Sorry, let me clarify that. So I'd like to say, we're working towards our goals and that was one of the things. But then I get to the other part of the referendum we passed, and that was our Trinity site at 4K. And I quote, "Student services are not located at the Trinity location, only SCC elementary." Um, staff support services and collaboration are not easily accessible at the location. Trinity uh, does not have break, access to the school district's breakfast option. And teachers at Trinity do not have copiers, printers, or office supplies on site and must go to the middle school or elementary school to have use. These are exact opposite of what we're voting on here today. We voted on a referendum 18 months ago to bring everything in sight, to have better services for everyone, to bring kids care all into the umbrella group. That was one of the reasons of kids care was it wraparound. We're utilizing the facilities more hours a day. And now we're looking at purchasing a whole nother facility. And so with that, I would like to call the question.
So what call the question means is that Tom would like to move this to a vote, which would cut off all other conversation and debate. Um, and I think that I am, I do want to give you a chance to respond because uh, there are some statements in there. So yes, Tim, please, I'd like you to, um, I'll give you a chance to respond. Tom, I just want to respond to the opposite. Uh, I'm not sure what you mean. Um, 4K, we, we currently provide at the Trinity site 4K wraparound care. So that, that has stayed the same. Um, and we would continue even if we purchased the 207 Packer Drive and expanded our daycare offerings at that location. We would still continue the morning, the 6:30 to 8 AM and then after school, 3:30 to 6 uh, at the school. So that would stay the same. So really, it's just trading from Trinity to 207 Packer Drive is, is, it's just an even swap. We're not going backwards or in any opposite direction in terms of support services. And if anything, it's a heck of a lot closer. Um, instead of, you know, six miles, it's about a mile. So Tom has called the question and according to Robert's Rules of Order, um, that does require a second and then there will be a vote and it does require a two-thirds vote. So there is a second from Kay. Okay, so just so everyone understands, calling the question means that we are ending debate. That means that no one else will be able, able to ask any more questions or make any other comments either in favor of or in opposition to what we have been considering. Okay, so we have motion and a second to call the question. And I'm going to do this by, I, I, I just think it's going to be hard for me to hear. Um, if we can do it by standing, it's probably even going to be better. And I'd like, can I have a couple volunteers to help me be counters? Yeah, okay. And can I have one other volunteer? Just be a counter. Okay, please, thank you. Okay, so if you are in favor of calling the question, which means we are ending all other discussion or questions on this consideration, uh, please say aye by standing up. And you can only stand or uh, for or against if you are a district resident eligible to vote. You need to be 18 and you need to be a district resident. Thank you, uh, just from seeing, uh, I will finish. Those opposed to calling the question, please stand. The ayes have it, uh, debate will be closed at this time, which means that we are looking for um, a motion and a second uh, based on the consideration for the action that we are here um, to do. Uh, Tim, do we? Yeah, my, my eyes are not that good, so.
Well, this, yeah, we talked about having an amount in here as well.
Okay, so uh, let's see, I'm a district representative, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to act as a district, or a district resident at this moment. Um, if you can go, I move to authorize the school board acquire a parcel of property, approximately 1.0 acres located at the 207 Packer Drive in Roberts, for a purchase price not to exceed $400,000. Um, and then, and to uh, then, Tim, I think the, and designate that parcel as a school. What's the rest of that school building site? Yeah, so the consideration needs to come up. And we'll start with authorize.
To authorize or authorize?
You can just say authorize. And then I'd like it to also state that it's designated to be used as a um, daycare center within the school district community or just as a, as a daycare center.
Would you like me to read that back to you? Are you going to read it?
So the motion I am making, authorize the school board to acquire a parcel of property of approximately 1.0 acres located at 207 Packer Drive in Roberts, Wisconsin, for a purchase price not to exceed $400,000 and to designate said parcel as a daycare center. But we still need that Wisconsin designate.
School building site. Should I put specifically a daycare center? Understood, yep. That was from our, yeah, legal counsel.
Okay, so the um, what Jeff Redman was helping us understand is adding in, designate said parcel as a school building site. So let me just read it once more. Authorize the school board to acquire a parcel of property, approximately 1.0 acre located at 207 Packer Drive in Roberts, Wisconsin, for a purchase price not to exceed 400,000. And designate said parcel as a school building site, specifically a daycare center. Is there a second? Who was that, please? Carol Bodish has the second. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just going to check on what I'd like to do for the vote. I think it's just going to help us with clarity. Voice is going to be difficult. Um, you may not want to stand up and everybody know how you vote. We do have paper ballots that we can vote yes or no on. Um, I would like to have, what I would ask is that we do come forward and there's, looks like four stations that you could just queue up and mark your yes or no and put it in the box. Um, I would ask that we have um, four volunteers so that when all the votes are cast, we can just quickly tabulate what the results are. So the um, process would be, we have, it looks, does it say yes or no on the slip, Tim? Okay, so if you mark yes, you would be agreeing to. You would be agreeing to authorize the purchase of this property. If you vote no. You are not approving. The purchase of the property. So at this time, I would just ask that we can. Um, can I have four volunteers that can help me with tabulation when we are all done with this? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. One more. Thank you. Okay. Um, so if you would all just please queue up and you can make two lines coming down the aisle. Mark your yes or no. Again, I ask that. You're on the honor system. You are district residents at least 18 years old and eligible to vote as an electorate. Uh, and please fold it. Thank you. Please, all those that are eligible to vote, who care to vote. If you have not cast your vote, please do so at this time. If you are eligible to vote and care to vote. And you have not done so, please do so at this time. And the third time's the charm. If you are eligible to vote. And you choose to vote and you have not yet voted. Please do so at this time. And if I can have my ballot counting volunteers, just meet me up here, please. Um, just so everyone knows, the, the way I'm going to count the votes. Is I'm going to have two people. Open the vote. They're both going to look at it. And they'll say either yes or no. And then I'm going to have two independently marking down a yes vote or a no vote. So we will know what the total number of ballots is cast. We'll know that on tabulator one, yes plus no equals that total. Same with two, and then we're looking for the match of yeses between tabulator one and tabulator two. So I want all the, I want all the ballots to come together. Bring all those ballots over.
So to sort if they needed help sorting. I don't have to. So you think it's like. Yeah.
I guess, yep, John said the ballots are ready to go. And before that, I don't know the results, but I just wanna thank everyone for being here and, and, and participating tonight and, and voicing your opinions and concerns and just being present. So thank you for being here. Okay, so we'll come back to order the, um, and thank you to our four vote tabulators, I appreciate that very much. Uh, for the yes votes, there are 42. For the no votes, there are 72. And there were five who placed empty ballots in the basket, so the noes have it, the motion does not pass. At this time, um, at this time, we have, uh, to, uh, is there any other business that may come before this meeting appropriately? So there's a motion to remove from the table the, uh, discussion of the nine and a half acres, um, which was the former county land adjacent to the school forest that was tabled at the previous meeting. Would you, um, I, I do need a second. Um, I only need one of them, so someone second and state your name. Aaron Post and a second. Eric Holt, thank you. Long night not to wear my hearing aids, I'm sorry. Um, and then it does require a vote. Um, all those in favor of opening up what the previously tabled discussion was, please stand if you're in agreement. And can I have someone help me count this, please?
What, what is your count?
What's your number? 29 and 30, okay, so I'm gonna hold that 29 and a half for here. Um, thank you, if you are opposed, uh, please, and opposed to opening this discussion, please stand. The noes have it, the motion will, uh, to take off the table failed and will not be reopened. Um, at this time, if there's any other business that can come before this meeting, which I do not believe we have anything else that was on the table. Tom, do you wanna make your motion now? We have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second, and who was our second, please? Thank you, all those in favor? Hi. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening, and have a good rest of your evening.